I'd like to introduce the moderators today. A little bio on each one of them. Lisa Beatrice, who is the CEO of Valley Health Services, Inc. Lisa manages 160-bed skilled nursing and rehabilitation facility located locally here in Herkimer. Lisa is a licensed nursing home administrator and has been with Valley Health Services for the past 15 years. During that time, she has launched a variety of new programs and services of benefit to the region, most notably the, help me out here Lisa, the Pelative Care Center at Valley Health Services for care of terminally ill, which was named the Rural Health Program of the Year in 2004 by New York State Association of Rural Health. Lisa serves on a number of community boards and has a bachelor's degree in health services administration from Ithaca College and an MBA from Sage Graduate School. Also today is John Scarono, who is the Executive Director of Herkimer County Chamber of Commerce. The Herkimer County Chamber of Commerce represents over 500 members made up of both small businesses as well as large corporations, including financial, educational, agriculture organizations all across Herkimer County. The Chamber's mission is to foster a positive business for environment, for private and public entities operating in the county, and to assure the successful continuation of growth in current and new businesses in this county. Herkimer County Chamber of Commerce works closely with our business members, elected officials, and community programs to make Herkimer County a great place to live and also to work. At this time, I'll call on Lisa.
Thank you, Nick, and thank you to all the faculty and staff of Herkimer County Community College for your hospitality and allowing Congressman Arkury to conduct this town hall meeting here today. I wish everyone a good afternoon. As you've heard, my name is Lisa Beatrice, and I am the CEO of Valley Health Services right down the hill. And we're very appreciative that the college let him be here today, or else he might have been at our house. And it's noon, and we would have had to give him lunch. I will serve as one of the moderators for today's town hall meeting alongside John Scarono, the Executive Director of the Herkimer County Chamber of Commerce. The topic of today's town hall meeting is healthcare reform, an issue that's clearly on the minds of many throughout our community. As a moderator, I have the great privilege today of being able to have a few minutes to talk to you about my thoughts on healthcare reform. As you heard from the reading of my biography, I have dedicated my life to the care of the frail, aging, and terminally ill. It is on behalf of these individuals that I speak to you today. You've heard a great deal about healthcare reform in the media over the past several months, but you've heard very little about the impact of aging services and long-term care. Individuals working in my field have a firm and steadfast belief that all aging Americans should receive care when they need it, where they need it, and in a place they call home. However, the current system for financing long-term care presents serious financial barriers for the elderly and often prevent them from receiving the services they need. As the baby boomers age into retirement, the need for long-term care will double over the next three decades, turning current problems into a far greater national crisis. It is estimated that 10 million Americans today need long-term care, and ironically, over 40% of these individuals are actually under the age of 65. But our current financing system leaves many with unmet needs and catastrophic costs. The current system has also resulted in an unsustainable burden on the Medicaid system. If our nation does nothing to change the current financing system for long-term care, overwhelming pressure on state budgets in the Medicaid system will force states to choose between drastically reducing funding for other needed programs like education or allowing individuals to go without the care they need. I can tell you this, this no-one-wins decision-making is already taking place. Here in New York State, it happened with the passage of the 2009-2010 state budget. Merely federalizing long-term care is also not the answer, because it will only lead to cost shifting. We need a new system for raising dollars and paying for long-term care. The nation should adopt an insurance model for financing long-term care rather than relying so heavily on Medicaid. The need for long-term care is a risk, not a certainty. An insurance model can spread the risk more equitatively. Not everyone requires long-term care, just not everyone gets cancer, and not everyone crashes their car and has an automobile accident, but we have insurance for such things. A system should be developed to provide coverage for all Americans to the extent feasible to allow all Americans to have access to long-term care without impoverishing themselves or their families. The nation should move away from a welfare system to an insurance system under which everyone receives coverage. A new funding system will not only relieve the current burdens on financing care, it will stop strangling providers like Valley Health Services financially and allow them to provide services individuals need and environments that they want to live in. As the healthcare reform debate rages on, I ask Congressman Arkury, on behalf of our nation's elderly and the many providers like myself who serve them, and urge him and his colleagues to ensure long-term care services and supports are a part of this badly needed legislation. I appreciate your attention to that this morning. But before we begin, I'd like to have John go over some ground rules for today's event to ensure that the congressman can answer as many questions as possible. So, John?
Thanks so much, Lisa. It's gonna be a tough act to follow. Before I do go over the ground rules, though, I just want to say how pleased I am to be a part of this town hall meeting on healthcare reform. Just to let you know, 25% of our Herkimer County residents are either under the age of five or over the age of 65, and we all realize this is the group that most needs and uses our healthcare system. Most of our businesses in Herkimer County are considered small businesses, ones that have to provide healthcare for not only themselves but to make a huge, great effort to provide that as a benefit to their employees. With that said, I know our county residents, and thank you for coming, are very concerned and interested in what healthcare reform and healthcare insurance reform will bring to our particular area. The Chamber of Commerce always states that it works with its elected officials. From experience, I can tell you that Congressman Arkury will work with all of us to make what I feel is the best healthcare system in the world even better, and I thank Congressman for doing this for us. I'll go over the ground rules now. Over the next hour and a half, the congressman is going to answer as many questions as he can. We're going to try the best we can to wrap up by about 1:30. So if you don't have your questions answered today, and hopefully you will, please see a member of the congressman's staff on your way out to pass along your questions or concern so you can get a direct response from the congressman in writing. All right, here we go. We'll go over the ground rules. If you have a question, we ask that you raise your hand, and Lisa and I will call on you to ask your question. When we do call on you, we ask that you make your way to the closest aisle to meet a member of the congressman's staff who will be holding a microphone. If you take a second look around, you'll see the members of the congressman's staff holding the microphones in the aisle. Raise your hands, guys, everybody can see you, so that you know who to look for. The congressman's staff will hold a microphone for you while you ask your question. This is to ensure that the microphones the college has so graciously allowed us to use aren't accidentally dropped or broken.
Or thrown.
Or thrown. I'll duck. Congressman, you'll duck, but you're a little taller than I am, so you might have a little problem then. Please state your name and where you're from before you ask your question or make your statement. Each person selected to ask a question will have up to two minutes to ask their question and make a statement. At the end of the two minutes, your time will be up, and the congressman will respond. Lisa and I will be keeping a stopwatch with us to ensure each person stays within their time the congressman is able to answer your question or as many questions as possible. Once you've asked your question, please move back to your seat and allow the congressman to answer your question. We cannot allow people to stand in the aisle, so again, after your two minutes are up, please return to your seat. As I said, the congressman wants to allow as many people to speak as possible, so we're going to stick to the two-minute rule. We ask that everyone, please, please be respectful to everyone in the room. The congressman will not interrupt you during your question or statement, and we ask that you extend him the same courtesy. With that said, I'd like to bring Mr. Leno back up. Thank you.
At this time, I'd like to welcome our congressman, Mike Arkury.
Can everybody hear me okay? Microphone working? Great. I want to first of all say thank you to President Murray and Mr. Leno and all of the great staff here at Herkimer Community College for allowing us to use this great facility. This works out really well for us, so we appreciate it, and thank you, all of you, for being here. Just so you get some idea of the pressure that we're under, when Lisa got done speaking, she just punched me in the arm and said, "Don't forget the elderly in this bill. Make sure you take care of them." So we get a lot of, you know, obviously, a lot of different people want to weigh in on this, and that's why I'm here. We've been doing these around the district, and they've been working out very well. In the genesis, the way this started today was last week I was at a veterans' event in Illyon, and as I was walking through, I got there a little early, and we had a great discussion with five or six people, and we just were kicking around some of the things and some of the ideas, and the people said, you know, "You really ought to do this, because there's a lot of myths out there, there's a lot of information that you shared with us that we really appreciate." So we said, "Well, we've been trying to get something together in Herkimer, so we sort of doubled our effort this week, and we were able to put this together today." So that's sort of what we want to do here. You know, I'm not going to have all the answers for you. I'm here to basically share the information that I have. As many of you know, I have not made a decision on this bill, and there's a good reason for that, and that is because this thing changes almost daily. Senator Baccus came out with a plan this week, which is totally different, and there's five different proposals that are out there, a lot of different information. So what I would like to hear, and please don't feel it necessary to ask me a question if you just have a comment or something that you think I should know or I need to know, you know, that's fine as well. If you have a question, I'll certainly do my best, but if I don't have an answer for you, you know, we'll take your name down or your email address, and we'll get back to you or give you a call back with the specifics on that. So with that, why don't we open it up, and let's take questions.
I feel bad that I have to ask this question, but after watching the television news and whatever, and I'm protesting...
Can everybody hear her in the back? No? We need to, okay.
After watching the news, I'd like to ask you how we protest anything without sounding racist?
You know...
Because it's taking away from the issues, and it's not right, and we'd like to do it the right way if we know how. How do we protest without sounding racist?
Obviously, I can't answer that. I can tell you that certainly I'm here to hear whatever it is that you feel is necessary for me to hear, and I'll do the best I can. I mean, this week, you know, I took a vote on that Joe Wilson with respect to the House, and I voted no, that I didn't think that we should take any action. He apologized, the president accepted his apology, let's move on. You know, we have so many things to focus on. The last thing that we need are more polarizing issues, and we need to stay focused. I mean, this is hard enough. I can't tell you how difficult this issue is. We don't need to be, you know, on the polar edges with the conservative-liberal politics. We need to stay focused on this. So, I mean, basically, you know, let's be respectful to each other, and let's give our comments, and I'll do the best I can to answer and give you as much information, but thank you.
Thank you, congressmen. First of all, it's nice to see you again.
Good to see you.
For, I don't know if you remember me, my name is Joseph Chiloli. I'm a county legislator here. I have a comment and I have a question. First comment is, being that I'm originally from overseas, to me, I think it's ridiculous, frankly, that the United States of America, the richest country in the world, cannot provide health insurance for their own citizens, and at the same time, you know, Congressman, we spend millions every month on providing healthcare to Iraqi citizens. My question to you is, we also know that there are millions of people that aren't insured, and I'm hoping that the president understands why, because I've heard him say that we're going to insure everybody, and everybody's going to buy into a plan, and those who do not will be penalized. The way I see it is people are uninsured because they can't afford it. That's the bottom line of it. So the question to you is, does this bill insure everybody, and especially those who cannot afford it? Will it be no cost or low cost? That's my question. Thank you.
Great question. Couple of points. I mean, you know, America's not like every other country, and, you know, a lot of people say, well, and I've said it myself, you know, so many other countries were the only, one of only two industrialized countries in the world, the other being Turkey, that doesn't have, you know, universal healthcare. Well, part of that is that, you know, and the more I look at this, I have to honestly tell you, the more I see that we are not like. I mean, you know, the Netherlands and Switzerland have an insurance-based universal healthcare plan, so it's possible. Granted, they're much smaller countries than the United States, and don't forget, we're a very heterogeneous, you know, society, whereas most, many other countries have very similar populations. So it's much different doing it in New York. Now, here's another point that's very important. We recognize it here. We have huge number of people in our area, in our district, that work in insurance companies. So, you know, I go visit, for instance, Blue Cross, Blue Shield. They say, you know, "We want to sit down." Great, I want to sit down and talk to you. And they make sure that I meet all 400 people that work there who are people who work in our district, which is, you know, an important part. Hey, you know, we want to make sure that what we do here fits in as best as we can with, you know, what we already have. So that's what makes it different. We are not trying to, everyone realizes we can't erase it and start from scratch. It's just not going to work, and there's no political, how shall I say, you know, will to do that. It's just not going to happen. So we have to try to do it within the structure that we have, which makes it a little more difficult. I think it was Edison that said, "He didn't fail to find, you know, a way to make a lightbulb 100 times, he just found 100 different ways not to make a lightbulb." You know, we have found a lot of different ways not to do healthcare. We're still trying to find the right way to do healthcare here in America. To answer the specifics of your question, some of the things that we're trying to do is, we are trying to insure as many as we possibly can, trying to insure all of the people that don't have insurance. But I say this, and this is critically important. We keep talking about the moral imperative, that is, the necessity of insuring those people without insurance. No doubt about it, that's important, we should try to do it. But there's another equally important issue, and that is the economic imperative. That is, what are we going to do to ensure that people that do have health insurance and like their health insurance can keep that health insurance into the future? That's what we're really, I mean, that's equally what we are trying to do here, and that is extremely difficult part of this. You know, how do we continue to have seniors get Medicare the way they get it? In our district, a lot of people like their Medicare Advantage. Well, that's a good thing. We want to probably keep Medicare Advantage, but we probably can do some things with Medicare Advantage, having talked to a lot of insurance companies, that make it more affordable for us to do it, without cutting and in any way infringing on the benefits of seniors. So we have to try to do these things. Let me give you, for instance, if I can. In the past decade, healthcare premiums have doubled, all right? So 10 years ago, if you were paying $400 a month for an insurance plan, you are now paying $800 a month for that same insurance plan for your family. Now, think about this. If those rates continue for the next five years, you will pay $200 more, all right? If they increase at the same levels. That means you'll be paying $1,000. Do you think that in the next five years, you're going to get a net increase in your pay of $200 per month? Most people don't see that. So that's the economic imperative that I'm talking about. If we don't fix that, the system will no longer continue to work, and the people who say that they're happy with their insurance will no longer be happy with their insurance because they won't be able to afford it. So if I'm working for a company and my company pays 50% of my insurance, I'm happy with that perhaps, but if they start to drop that down to 25% or 20% or 10%, I am no longer going to be happy with that over the next five years. That's what we have to address. We absolutely have to do that, and we have one more, I'm going to jump in and throw a lot of things out in this particular question. We have one more issue, and it's really a specific issue to us here, and that is, we are in a rural region, and that includes Utica. Utica, people, we don't think of Utica as a rural region, but Utica is part of the rural healthcare system. We have difficulty keeping our doctors because our reimbursement rate to our doctors through Medicare and Medicaid is so low. We have to be sure that whatever we do doesn't continue to drive our doctors away because they can't make enough money here. I mean, we have in upstate New York, 65 doctors per 100,000 people. In New York City, they have 375 doctors per 100,000 people. Now, even assuming that, you know, they have more research down there, that's still a dramatic difference, and we continue to lose it. I'm a blue dog, which means we're the moderate-to-conservative Democrats. Everyone thinks it's because we're moderate-to-conservative. One of the things they don't see about healthcare with us is, we all represent, or most of us, represent rural districts, districts that have this real concern that if we don't do healthcare the right way, that we are going to continue to lose our doctors in rural regions. So these are, and I'll talk, I'm sure, more about that as we go along, but those are the concerns that I have. So we are trying to insure all of the individuals. Honestly, I don't know if that's going to be possible. We are certainly going to try to do that. We are going to try to insure as many as we can, and at the same time, we absolutely have to fix it for the people that have insurance, or they're not going to be able to continue their insurance into the future.
Sir, my name's John Cipriano, and I'm from here in Herkimer. I have a comment first, and then a couple of questions for you. First, the comment, I'm retired military, and I've lived overseas, and I've had to take my family members to socialized medical clinics overseas, and I'll tell you all right now, the worst of the medical care we have in America is better than the best that they have over there, and that comes from personal use. Now, my question, sir, nothing good typically is done quickly. What's the rush on this program? That's question one. And my second question is, why do I hear nothing significant in terms of tort reform being included in either House's package? Thank you.
Okay, great. First of all, with respect to the speed, I agree, I can tell you that I'm one of the people in the Blue Dogs, I mean, we were the primary force behind stopping this thing in August, and I told the speaker, and I said it in front of the caucus, I wanted it very clear in mid-August, I am not, I don't care how good this bill is, I am not going to vote for it if we do it before August, before we go home in August, because we need to go home, we need to talk about it. You know, look, there is some expediency here, but I agree with you. I mean, we need to take our time, and the more we spend on this, the more complicated, believe me, I go to bed one night and I say, "I think I'm going to support it," and then I wake up and read some more things, the next day, and say, "Geez, I don't know if I can support this thing." So I go back and forth, and I think that's part of the, you know, the problem. There is some real pressure, I can tell you, to move quickly, and then there's, we're trying to kind of, you know, slow this thing up and do it the right way. I can tell you, we probably will do it this year. I don't think we're going to do it in the next couple of weeks. Probably what's going to happen is a bill will come out of the House of Representatives, some bill will come out of the Senate, it'll go to conference, it'll come back out. I mean, there's going to be, believe me, a lot of back and forth on this. Some of the concerns that I have are that I think both Houses right now want to get bills out and bring it to conference to do the negotiating, and that's difficult for guys like me because, that have districts, because I want to try, even on my first vote, I want to have as good a bill as I can the first time, even though I know that it's not going to be the final bill, I still want it to be as good as it can possibly be. So I have a little bit of a problem with, let's just get a bill out, and then we'll bring it to conference, because I know once it goes to conference, I lose some of the control that I have over it, so as a member of Congress. So that's the first thing. I tend to agree with you. We will speed it up, but not to the point where, you know, I think we're being too fast. It'll happen before the end of the year, I think, if it's going to happen at all. Second point, tort reform. President talked about it, and I think he's right, and I want to tell you, I've taken a turnaround on tort reform to a certain degree. Let me say this, I was a district attorney for 13 years. I've been sued more than everybody in this place put together, I can tell you without a doubt, for malpractice. It's just the nature, if you're a DA, that's what happens. And one of the things that aggravated me the most were frivolous lawsuits, and when our insurer would say, "Mike, we got to settle this thing," and I'd say, "This is nonsense. Don't settle it. You know, you're settling it for nuisance value, it's nonsense," and they say, "Come on, you know, you're a lawyer, you know what's going to happen. We have to settle it." And that really annoyed me, and I think we should have provisions that allow, and they can do it now, the judges just don't do it enough, we're a sanctioned attorney for a frivolous lawsuit. All right, now, I don't think we should put caps on the amount of recoveries. First off, daughter is injured as a result of the negligence of a doctor. I don't think that any arbitrary panel in Congress or anywhere else should set the limit. I think a jury of the peers should decide it. And I can tell you, Oneida and Herkimer County have traditionally the lowest incidence of finding verdicts on behalf of doctors, certainly in New York State, we're one of the lowest, especially when you compare it to the Bronx. So I think there should be tort reform, and the proposal that's out there for tort reform talks about this, and I think it's a good proposal, and that is this, that the doctors themselves set and create a standard for a good medicine, and that becomes the standard. Now, if an attorney, and these are just, you know, this is not etched in stone, but obviously, this is what they're talking about, if an attorney files a lawsuit, the judge looks at the guidelines that have been accepted, and if the doctor's conduct did not vary from what the protocol is, it gets dismissed on its face, all right? I think those are the kind, you know, the doctors tend to like that. I think that's the kind of tort reform we should look at. That's the kind of thing that I will support if we look at that, you know, and again, I mean, you know, the devil's in the details, but I can support that kind of proposal with respect to tort reform. It is my hope that if we do the tort reform, we can bring both sides, both sides of the aisle together a little more, because that's one of the things that the other side of the aisle talks about. But I think that, you know, and I tell you, I've taken, listening to my town hall meetings, initially, I was not in, you know, this place. The more I listen to it, and the more I listen to the proposal that's out there about setting these sort of, you know, parameters by the doctors themselves, the more I think that might be something that will work. So that's why these town hall meetings have been very effective for me, because they really do sort of, you know, give you a better idea of what's out there and what some of the different proposals are. Okay, thank you.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Rice, and I'm from Illyon, New York. Congressman Arkury, I first want to thank you for taking the time out to hear what we have to say, and I do understand there's very strong opposition to government-run healthcare provision in the bill, and I just wanted to know what your stance was on that issue.
Are you talking about the public option?
The public provision, yes.
Okay. You know, I support the public option. I think the concept of a public option is good, and I use this as my criteria. First of all, in a vacuum, if it creates the kind of competition that I think that we talk about, it makes sense. Here's one of the things, in New York State, in the compensation plan, we have a public option with respect to the state insurance fund. So they offer cheap compensation insurance to employers who can't afford it. Now, I was out to Hartford, which has a big place in New Hartford, I think they employ 300 or 400 people, and I talked to the people at Hartford, and their primary business is compensation insurance, and they compete with the state insurance fund, and they're able to compete. In fact, they do most of it. The state insurance fund just takes a small piece of it for the people that can't afford the other one. That's the idea of what the public option would be. Now, there are some problems that I have with the concept of the public option, and that's this. If it creates the kind of competition that we want, what that should do is bring the cost of premiums down by insurance companies, which is a good thing. My problem, my worry, I should say, with that is, if the premiums come down on insurance companies, they're going to then reimburse providers, our local hospitals, our local doctors, even less than they're getting now. And if you talk to local doctors and you talk to local hospitals, it's the private insurers that are keeping them going right now because the reimbursement rate for Medicare and Medicaid is so low, relatively speaking. So my concern becomes, I like it, it sounds good, but will that then, you know, cause a situation where we're going to get even less? Now, what the Blue Dogs did, we put an amendment in to the bill. We said, the original idea for the public option was the reimbursement rate for doctors would be the same rate that Medicare pays plus 5% more. We were, again, I was concerned that that would cause doctors to continue to leave rural areas like ours, and so would the other Blue Dogs. So we amended it to be that they would be able to negotiate the rates, the providers, hospitals, the doctors would be able to negotiate the public option rate. Again, that, you know, that seems to make sense. I think it'll work. I'm not sure if we're going to have a public option, if it functions in that way to creates competition, I think it would be a good thing. Let me say this, Senator Baccus's bill talks about mandating insurance for every person, but he doesn't have a public option. So if you mandate insurance, you have to have something that's affordable for the people that have to buy it. In a co-op, no one knows what this co-op concept is. It may work very, very well, but I have no way of knowing, I don't think anyone has any way of knowing if the co-op will bring insurance costs down low enough to be able to give those people who are mandated to buy insurance the ability to buy it. So, look, this is, you know, we're testing new waters here, so the concept seems good, and again, that's one of the reasons that I think we need to do this thing slowly, because we are not sure where these things are going, and we need to be prepared to, if we do it, to fix it later on if it doesn't work exactly. it later on, if it doesn't work exactly the way we want. I hope I've answered your question.
Good afternoon, Congressman. My name's Jason. I'm from Utica. My question is in regards to Senator Bockus's most recent proposal, in which he indicates he would, I guess, recommend the taxation of benefits, which will essentially crush the middle class. I know your position in the past. I guess, we're just looking for some reassurance that if that does come to you, that you will not, you know, be in favor of taxing of benefits.
The two, thank you. The two provisions that the Bockus, it's not really a bill, the Senate sort of puts out sort of a parameter, sort of a sheet on what they want. The two pay fours that the Bockus proposal talks about is, one, a tax on medical devices, all right? And I oppose that because that's one of the, one of the things we make a lot of around here. You know, Conmed in Utica makes medical devices. That'd be a huge tax on what Conmed makes. Covidian, which is out in the Riscany Falls, makes a lot, a place called Transonic, you know, we make a lot of medical devices in our district. So, his tax would put a tax on those devices, which, you know, those companies, you know, Conmed, they compete around the world. That would put them, I think, at a disadvantage. So, I have a real problem with that. The second part that he talks about is putting a tax on popular health insurance plans. So, if I have a health insurance plan that I like and it's popular, I don't, I'm not exactly sure what popular means, but, you know, that, it puts a tax on it. Well, that's, that's a heavy tax on the middle class. I mean, that is directly on the middle class, which is where I don't think we should be taxing. So, I have a real problem with those two provisions, with the pay fours. Not that the House proposals are great, but I like the House proposals, if we have to do it, better than the Bockus proposals.
Hi, I'm Bill Goke from Little Falls. I guess my question is, and I'm unsure as to how the public option is going to drive down, drive out, or drive down the cost of insurance for private companies if people who have private insurance can't leave to go to that public option.
They, well, not, you can't leave it. I mean, there are only a certain sector of people that can go into that plan. Just, for instance, government employees cannot leave their plan and go into it. Employers have to offer it. But if an employer does not offer it and chooses to pay whatever the penalty is for not paying it, then those people get an opportunity to go into the public option. So, it's broadening a pool where people, I mean, basically, the idea is this. We're creating a group of people that has to buy insurance. We're going to provide it to them. If a company wants to come in and compete for it, they can come in and compete for it. And the idea is that this pool of new people that are going to buy insurance will, will lead insurance companies to come in and try to compete. And again, in much the same way that it happens in New York with the state insurance fund. That's, that's the thinking. I didn't write it, but that's the thinking on it.
Good afternoon, Congressman. Haven't seen you since Dollsville. John, Ms. Beatrice. A couple of comments, then questions. First, the number, the gentleman to my left here brought up the 47 million uninsured amount. And that is thrown around recklessly. That's actually broken down into five categories. That includes people who are temporarily without insurance, young people who think they're invincible and just don't buy it, people who are eligible and don't buy it, illegal aliens who should not have it and should not be in the country, and the other group, which is between 10 and 15 million. Those are the people who can't afford it. Those, that's the only problem. We're talking 15 million, not 47. Second, the gentleman over here wisely brought up the idea of tort reform, and you said you're in favor of wiping out the frivolous lawsuits, but you're not in favor of capping the amounts. Well, when we have charismatic phonies and actors like John Edwards, who whip up the juries to give out unreasonable settlements for alleged pain and suffering, that's a problem. Moving on to another area, one thing that drives up the cost of insurance, I have a sheet from State Senator Seward showing how many mandates are put on insurance by every state. If you wipe that out and just bring it down to allow people to get a bare bones catastrophic insurance, that would drop rates considerably. Second, fourth, fifth, whatever. Under no circumstance should any publicly financed insurance plan cover the killing of the unborn or require people who have an objection to performing abortions to be forced to do it. And that is in one of the bills. Now, my question. I'm a senior citizen. I'm on Medicare. I did not get Part B because that requires me to make an $1,100 donation to the federal government every year. I don't get anywhere near that. I asked about a medical savings account where I could put the $1,100 into my own account every year. And I said, then can I roll it out at the end of the year? She says, oh, no, that goes back to the government. Why should I make that donation to the government? Why can't I put my $1,100 into a saving account every year so maybe somewhere down the year when I have an illness, I can pay for it myself? Most years, I don't even have $100 in medical expenses. Why should, why can't I have that kind of medical savings account, and all seniors have it, where we can put the money in and roll it over and not have anything to do with the government? Thank you.
I have to tell you, I have not heard of a health savings plan where the government takes the money. So, I, I've not seen that, but I will certainly check on that. And I'll try to get you an answer on that, because all the health savings plan that I have seen always allows you to continue to build it up in case you need it for catastrophic, and then you have it as a savings plan. But I will check that. Let me get back to some of your other comments, though. First of all, you talked about the number of insured, and I think you're spot on with, I mean, I don't know about the numbers, but I think you're pretty close to exactly where we are. And I think that clearly, our target is the uninsured. There is no doubt about it. But one of, the only point I want to raise is this, is two points about the invincibles. And that's sort of the term that people use about the young people who choose not to get insurance. Two points about that. One is, by requiring them to go into the risk pool, which is sort of what the Bockus bill talks about, it obviously brings the cost of insurance down for everyone else. And that's one concern. But there's sort of a global kind of reason for that. And that is that a lot of those individuals, when they do get sick, go to an emergency room and thereby cost all of us significantly more if they can't afford to pay for that. So, it's that emergency room service that really hurts us all, that we end up paying for. And, you know, I don't know, there's a lot of figures out there what that number is. But I think it's pretty safe to say, when you see the number of people that go into the emergency room without insurance, that we end up caring for, we see that we all end up paying for that in one way or another. Next point is, oh, the point about the abortion. And in all of the House bills, I can tell you, that I'm familiar with, include what's known as the Hyde Amendment in it. And the Hyde Amendment says that it's basically continuation of what we have, where the money cannot be used to fund abortions. The last part is, well, I think that's it. We did the health savings, the number of uninsured. Okay, so I think I answered all your questions and all your comments?
The mandates.
Oh, the state mandates, yes. That's a really interesting, and I know you study the Constitution and you're interested in it. That creates a real problem for us. And that's this, is that the states themselves actually regulate insurance. You know, people ask me all the time, they say, hey, why don't we just allow, why don't, why don't you just allow me to go over the state lines and buy my insurance in Pennsylvania where it's cheaper? Why don't you allow me to go to this state or that state? That's, that's an important constitutional question. I mean, I consider myself a states' rights person. That is, that I believe that the rights, you know, we have strong states' rights. The states regulate insurance. And if the federal government comes in and preempts the states, you're probably going to be one of the people that says, oh, the federal government's trying to take everything over. If we, wait a minute, let me just finish. If we then come in and say, well, the state has to do this or the state has to do that, because the states regulate insurance. And that's a real problem. And I'm, I'm working real hard on a particular amendment that I will probably be offering, that says that we can, that an insurance company can give an additional premium for people who live healthy lifestyles. Right now, it says you can't give more than 20%. We want that to up to 30%. That's a different, that is not applicable in New York because of rules within New York. So, I think that should be preempted. I think people that live a healthy lifestyle should be able to get reductions. That's the kind of preventative medicine that I think we should be incentivizing. So, there is a real problem with what we're going to do here, because are we going to attempt to preempt state law? Or, and that goes beyond just the healthcare. That goes into, you know, the AIG and all of the other, all the other issues.
The reason I brought it up is people here also vote in state elections, and they tell their state representative that they want that.
Okay, very good.
My name is Madeline Mowers. I'm from Frankfurt. I wondered if the pharmaceutical ads that are in TV and in the magazines, to the point of nauseam, can't something be done and lower the price of the drugs? Because I'm sure they're paying thousands of dollars to put those ads on television. And who needs to be told to ask their doctor about every little thing?
How about when you're with your 15-year-old daughter in a sea, what is it, the Viagra ad goes on, on TV and, you know, or you're with, that's, I've experienced that before and had to get up and leave the room real quickly. But, but I agree. I mean, those are, that's some of the things that we, we talk about a lot. Here's one of the problems with, with saying to pharmaceutical companies, you can't advertise. And I recognize the benefit to that. They spend a great deal of money. One of the problems with that is First Amendment, right to free speech. And that's a real, real issue. So, that is what is always cited on the other side. Now, we stopped cigarette companies from advertising, but again, there was a big difference. You know, the Surgeon General said that that was, you know, detrimental to your health, so we were able to prevent that. It's a little different in preventing pharmaceutical companies. So, that's one of the problems. But the amount of money that they spend is dramatic. And I say this, you know, I went to, I tell this joke all the time. I went to my doctor. My blood pressure was a little high. I know it's very hard to imagine that I have high blood pressure, but my blood pressure was high. Doctor said, I'll put you on Libretor. I said, I don't want to go on Libretor. You know, I don't want it. He said, what do you mean, you don't want it? Everybody wants to be. I said, I don't, you know, I mean, and he wasn't, you know, I like my doctor, he's very good. He just, he said, most people tell me to put them on. I said, I don't, you know, I run every day, let's try to get a diet. But he's, he just, he just did what everyone normally wants by saying, okay, I'll put you on Libretor, because it's easy and people want it. So, that's one of the concerns that I have. Here's a real problem that we have with the drug. And this is the one really, I think, strong argument that the pharmaceutical companies make, is it costs a huge amount of money for them to develop drugs. And here's the idea, here's what we hear all the time. Look, most of the other countries, like Canada, negotiate the cost of prescription drugs countrywide. So, they bring the cost down significantly. But you know what's happening? America pays for the research of new drugs because our drug costs are so high. So, we're paying for the development, I mean, you make a pretty good argument, America pays for the development of new drugs for the rest of the world because our pharmaceutical and drug prices are so high here, when many of the, most other countries have much lower prices. That's a problem. Now, we had a huge, we've been having a huge knockdown, dragout within our caucus, because we want to allow Medicare to negotiate the cost of prescription drugs with the pharmaceutical companies. We talk about closing the donut hole. That's the best way to close the donut hole on Medicare Part D, is to allow that to happen. And I get really sort of, when people say to me, well, what's your position on importation of drugs from Canada? I think that's silly. Canada negotiates. Why should we import drugs from Canada, who is negotiating with the drug companies, when we could have it negotiated ourselves? The VA negotiates the cost and they're able to bring it down. Medicare should be able to do the same thing. So, that amendment was included in the Energy and Commerce Bill to allow Medicare to negotiate it. I don't know if it's going to make it in. The President has sort of a different deal that he's made with Pharma, whereby they come in and they kick in like $80 billion. That's not chump change. I mean, that's real money. We think there's, we think if there's $80 million on the table, we could probably do, I think anyway, we could probably do a good bit better than that. And I think we should negotiate it. So, that's one of the things that I'm going to continue to support. I feel very strongly about it. And the reason I bring all that up, I think that's totally related to the advertising on TV, because those are the costs that you and I pay for when we go. And, you know, and when you hear what some people pay for medication, and I had a great, I'm just going to, if you don't mind me segueing into this a little bit. I had a great meeting this week with the CEO of an insurance company that I don't think is in New York. It's called Humana. And they do some really good things, Humana. And they give, at the end of the month, they send out to all of their customers, like a bank statement. You know, you get your bank statement on your checking account? They send that out. So, they don't send every week a different slip, you know, or every time you go to the doctor, a slip saying, here's what you did. They send an end-of-the-month report. They also include in it the medication that you get, the color, they have a picture of the pills so you can, you can see it. And then they show on there what the generics are that are also available to you for those drugs, which is, I think, exactly the kind of thing that we should be doing. You know, people should have the opportunity to look at alternatives. They should have the opportunity to look into generics. And so, you know, those are issues that we grapple with all the time. How are we going to get this kind of open, you know, review of things? But to get back to my earlier point, the only argument the pharmaceutical companies make is, it costs them a lot of money to develop these drugs. So, for that reason, we're constantly negotiating back and forth on the term of the, the amount of time that they have the patent, how long their patent lasts before you can have a generic. So, there was at 15 years. We wanted to lower it to eight. I think we're going to end up with 12, so we'll shorten the amount of time. And again, their argument is, if you don't allow us to keep it, we're not going to be able to pay for the research that we develop these new drugs with. So, it's a, it's really, every time you do, the one thing I learned in Congress is, there's the law of unintended consequences. Every time you do one thing that you think is good, there's two other things that you have to deal with as a result of it. So, I agree with you. We're going to fight to try to get the Medicare to negotiate the price of drugs, and we think that'll help close the donut hole much quicker and much cheaper than we have right now.
Hi, I'm Jeff Kloski. I'm from Sequoia. I thank you for taking the time to meet with us. I'd like to make a few statements and then ask a question. One of the things I don't understand is, when you people write a bill, why does it have to be so complex that, if you watch one person's interpretation of bill, it says he's going to say one thing, another person reads the same statement, and their interpretation is totally different? So, unless something can be concise, and actually, there shouldn't be any interpretation needed. It should be concise and people should be able to understand what actually, what's going to be in that bill, so that we know what's going to be covered and what isn't going to be covered. And you're not going to be saying, well, this was intended to do this. And no, that's not what it was meant to be. Second of all, I would like to think, and I know, I think you people are exempt from except doing this healthcare provision, I would like to see a mandate that if a healthcare provision is taken, chosen by you, that you people should be mandated to go on the same program that you're asking us to do. And then, you know, you've also, now, the thing about rushing into things, and I think you just said it right then, right with your previous statement, you say, a lot of times, we take care of one thing, and then after we take care of one thing, there's a couple of more things that happen that we weren't aware of. So, my state, you know, what I feel is, before you do anything, you should be absolutely sure as far as what's going to happen. And you also said, there's a shortage of doctors in this area now. And I just saw where there was a poll a couple of days ago, that 45% of the doctors that answered this poll said, they would consider retiring if a whole health bill was passed. So, you know, how are you going to say that healthcare is going to be rationed if we're going to have a shortage of doctors?
Thank you. Thank you. Great, great questions. Let me start off, I think I got all of the points that you made. The last one, with respect to the doctors, and here's a very, here's, here's something for whatever it's worth, but something that I have discovered. And in fact, I talked to a doctor this morning who was dead set against, you know, any kind of single payer plan. But he agreed with my analysis of this. When I talk to doctors throughout the district who are in smaller practices, who practice by themselves, tend to, not exclusively, but tend to favor a single payer plan. They're tired of fighting with insurance companies. They're tired of fighting with insurance companies and fighting with the government to get paid. Doctors that are part of bigger, you know, that have better integrated billing systems in their office tend to oppose it. So, I think, you know, I was, I was surprised that in my district, better than half the doctors or pretty close to it support a single payer plan. Just, I think, simply because out of, I think in large part out of frustration. At least that's the feedback I've been getting. I gotta have to read my writing. Oh, you said, "We need to be absolutely sure before we pass the bill." I can tell you that, I mean, to be absolutely sure, we'll never pass a bill. I mean, you can't be absolutely sure, and, and I'm not, I mean, about anything. But I, I take your point to, to mean that, you know, we should try to test things out. And in a lot of the parts of the bill, why the bill is so thick is there are a lot of pilot programs in the bill. A lot of legislation that we pass includes pilot programs where we test something out in a couple of different markets or a couple of different areas that are, you know, urban, rural, suburban, and try to get an idea. A lot of things in the bill are different pilot programs that are, that are talked about. The people have ideas, but they're not sure if they're going to work. With respect to taking the plan, I've already been very clear on the record. I will take the plan. I think there's a lot of my colleagues who are going to take the plan. And I think you'll probably see an amendment that will probably pass that says that we have to take the plan. So, I, I would not be surprised. But I will take it. I can't speak for my colleagues, but I think I will support it. A plan that says that, a bill or an amendment that says that everyone has to have it. Because I think if we're going to, if we're going to require it, then we should, we should be willing to take it ourselves. One of the things you, you ask, and here's a copy of the bill right here. And I mean, in this, just so you get an idea. Two hands to pick it up. And that's writ, typed on both sides. It's not just one page. It's both sides, both pages. And there's, we try to do a comprehensive bill. And it is complicated. And I'm hearing my colleagues more and more saying, you know, "I spend all kinds of hours on this thing, and I'm still not sure." You know, the more I read, the more confused I become, clearly. But, but we do some good things in, in the bill, and that's why it's lengthy. For instance, we create, you know, there's one whole section that we create that talks about steps that we're going to be taking to incentivize primary care physicians. Now, that's really important. One of the things that, that you see in any, not any, but in, in many other countries that are successful is that their, their, their primary care physicians sort of run the, the show when a person comes. We don't see that here. And in fact, we're seeing less and less primary care physicians because many of our insurance companies and our, and our providers, Medicare, they don't compensate a primary care physician. So, if I'm a primary care physician and you come to see me, I don't get paid for that visit. But if I refer you to a specialist, that specialist will get paid. That's, there's something inherently wrong with a system that works that way. Yet, that's how our system works. So, what we're trying, now, we don't have anywhere near the number of primary care physicians that we need, especially in areas like this. So, one section of the bill talks about things that we're going to do, loan programs to create incentives for primary care physicians. Another point is things that we'll do to attract healthcare professionals to high-need areas, which are areas like ours. So, one of the, one of the points in this bill, for instance, that I'm familiar with, talks about a section that says, "Look, if you're in an area that's a high-need area that you think is a high-need area, and yet it's not designated, you know, it's not designated by the, the Secretary as a high-need area, here are the procedures for you easily to petition that so that this area can become designated more quickly as a high-need area." So, there are a lot of things that we talk about. We talk about a lot of, you know, ways to try to, to, to pull out the waste, fraud, and abuse, which is clearly in there. And a lot of the bill spends time on trying to find the waste, fraud, and abuse. So, that's why the bill is lengthy. I think it's way too lengthy. I think we should not be trying to do quite so much. I think, you know, there are certain things that we need to do. We should, we should in a sense prioritize what we need to do. For instance, I mean, we have to do away with the discrimination against a prior existing condition. Everyone agrees to that. You can't have a situation where a person is stuck on their insurance and they can't leave their insurance because they have a prior existing condition. That doesn't make sense. That's difficult. We have to do away with that. That's first and foremost. So, I, I think we need to, you know, I don't want to say scale the bill back, but I think, you know, you're right. 1,100-page bill is a massive bill. It's a lot longer when you have to read it, I can tell you. And Paige, you, you're talking about different interpretation. I can tell you about page 16. Got a question on page 16? Turned around. I read page 16 four or five times. I'm an attorney. Been practicing for a number of years. So, I think I knew what it, what it said. I call in one of, one of the people that works for me, who's my counsel, who's an attorney also. He reads it. We compare notes. We have a different interpretation. We haggle it out. We come together what we think it means. A couple of days later, I talked to the person who wrote the bill, attorney also. We were, we were different on, on one, one section of that. So, you're right. I mean, you're, you're never going to get something though. And I say the same thing. And I'm an attorney. I say, "Can't they write these things so people understand them? You know, so lawyers understand them?" So, obviously, we, we need to do a little better job in terms of how we craft these bills. And I was not on any of the three committees that crafted any of the bills, so I can't take responsibility for that. But I, to your point, I think you are exactly right. I, I think we need to try to keep these things a little more, a little briefer, and maybe do them in intervals and not do them all at one time. So, I'm willing to look at that anyway. I don't say "we," but, but Congress says, "Here's what it's going to mean." The authors of the bill. And then the CBO, the Congressional Budget Office, comes in and says, "No, it doesn't mean that at all. It's going to cost this much." And then we spent half of, you know, Congress spends half of their time fighting with the Congressional Budget Office as to what it really means. So, there is a real problem. To your point though, specifically to you, the original proposal said that the first, if you have a, a small business that has salaries for a year, annual salaries of $250,000 or less, you are exempted from the bill. We said that's too low, and we upped it to $500,000. So, the, the House bill now has a $500,000 ceiling on that, after which time a number of penalties start to kick in as you go on if you don't insure, you know, your, your group. That's difficult. I, I, I'm really concerned with that. I mean, I like $500,000, obviously, much better than $250,000. And there are still some, some compensation available in tax incentives to, to the company. But I was with a small business today in Utica, and he said, "Mike, I mean, our profit margins are small. We got, you know, I, I have, you know, I have my customers telling me if I raise prices, they understand. But at a certain point, they'll go to China to get what..." So, what good is offering insurance to two employees if I have 10 employees, if I end up with only eight employees? I mean, you know, that's counterintuitive to what we're trying to achieve here. We're, we're not trying to have people lose their jobs. So, that's a real concern, you know, and I think that's why the BACIS bill totally eliminates any of that pay-for in that regard. Look, we should not be, and this is easy for me to say again, I didn't write the bill, but we should not be required, you know, the whole idea of, of having insurance coming from the business themselves developed uniquely in America because of, of World War II, the rules that we put on with restrict, with respect to limiting the amount of compensation. And now, all of a sudden, it's become sort of this idea that, well, it's the responsibility of the employer to provide it. I, I think, you know, I think those things, those mindsets are going to start to change. And, you know, I mean, I strongly support now not taxing the benefit themselves, which is out there. And, and the reason that I do that is this, is you have a lot of people that tell me that they have taken a particular job at a significantly smaller salary because they want the healthcare benefits. So, you can't now turn around and say, "Okay, now we're going to tax the, the healthcare benefits." I mean, if you do that, you got to look to do it in the future. You can't, you, you can't penalize people who have made a serious decision based on that. You just can't do it. So, you know, with respect to the, to the damage to small business, there, there probably, you know, there probably will be some if we don't do this the right way, if we're not careful how we do it. There, there is no, no easy way. There's a reason this thing hasn't been done since Theodore Roosevelt first talked about it, you know, 100 years ago, is because it's very difficult. And, you know, and I think that's why it should be a process in it, you know, and that's why it's taken some time. So, I know I didn't really answer your question, but I sort of wanted to give you what my thought process on it was and where I, where I am, what I'm considering.
Ma'am, is the front here?
Good afternoon.
Just one minute, the microphone's coming.
Oh. Hi. Is this working?
Or not.
I can turn around and get it.
We have one.
We have another one. There you go.
Is this working?
Yes.
Okay. My name is Katie Roach Roberts. I have a couple of comments that are sort of connected with questions at the same time. Okay. I am very concerned about all of the misinformation that's being put out, which a certain number of people are just grabbing up and believing everything they hear. I happen to know, as most people probably do, there's a lot of misinformation out there. I myself have found a source online that I think is reliable. I'm, my question to you is, is there any way that you are trying to address your constituents about misinformation? And/or would you be willing to make a suggestion? Or if not, would you allow me to make a suggestion?
I think maybe you better...
You have the microphone, so you could make whatever suggestion you like. This is your time.
You don't want to comment on that then?
No, I will, but you can, you can make a suggestion if you want.
All right. I find the most reliable source for information online that I have found, it's associated with University of Pennsylvania. It is called factcheck.org. Probably some of you are familiar with it. Probably some of will, will say, "Oh, that's no good either." But I believe it is, unbiased. Second of all, I am wondering if the congressmen in Washington are carrying around the information with them in deciding the issues in the healthcare reform. Are they aware of, let's say, for example, I'm not aware myself, but I'm just asking. Let's say the level of profits, percentage of profits in healthcare industries, drugs, medical suppliers, you know, things like wheelchairs, da-da-da-da-da-da, so forth. And, and of course, insurance companies. And how much leeway do they have in their profit margin to perhaps lower their costs?
30 seconds left, ma'am.
Oh, okay. One quick thing. All right. I have a daughter who's in college. You wouldn't believe it, I'm old, but she has no health insurance except what she gets at SUNY Delhi, which covers next to nothing. Also, she's on student loans. Okay, now, she is at this moment in time facing a pretty severe situation. I am trying to figure out how the heck she's going to get the care that she needs. I believe a lot of young people don't have coverage because they can't afford it, da-da-da-da-da. And also, to the gentleman back, you were probably fully covered. If it were someone in your family with this problem, I think you might take a different view. That's it.
Thank you. All right. Couple of points. First off, to the misinformation that's out there, you know, I mean, that's one of the reasons I have these town hall meetings, to try to, you know, share information that I have and give my thoughts on things and my perspectives on it. But, you know, I mean, obviously, you know, you could watch, you, you could watch one of two different news stations and get totally different spins on the news. And so, you know, there, there's enough information out there, I think. But, but there clearly, there's misinformation in it, and I think that's part of the problem. I mean, people talk about death panels. I mean, there's, there's nothing whatsoever, and I have to address that. And, you know, I mean, part of that is that one of the things doctors are not compensated for, primary care or otherwise, is for discussing with their patients anything about care. That is, wills, proxies, healthcare proxies, any of those things, which are just things that a doctor always talks about with his patients. But we want to, we want to make sure that doctors continue to talk about that and compensate it. That's the only thing that is contained in the bill, and that's sort of spun out into...
Taken out.
No, no, it hasn't. It hasn't been taken out. No, it has not. There, there's, there's no final bill. I mean, there's still...
Well, I know, but it seems to me that it was taken out.
I, I don't think that it was. I, I do not, but it's hard to say because there are so many different versions of it. The bill, enough, there has been no action on the bill since we came back from, from August recess. No changes, no hearings on it, and that was in the bill at that time. So, it formally is still in the bill. All right? The, and, and, you know, misinformation. I mean, it's out there. People are going to, and I find that people are going to believe what they really want to believe anyway. So, you know, there's, there's interesting. There's the people on one side who are going to believe all that they want. People on the other side, the bulk are still in the middle who listen, and that's part of the reason that I have town hall meetings. Well, that's, I can't, you know, you can't, people, people do what people do.
Please don't interrupt the conversation.
That's all right. That's...
Just don't throw anything.
Yeah, no, no. Well, last thing I want to talk about is, you asked about that topic, but I also, you know, you mentioned that I certainly asked those questions about my thoughts on insurance companies. And then, you mentioned that, sorry. Do you hear me?
How about now? There you go. All right. So, one of the things I now start to ask insurance companies, "So, what is your administrative cost?" And they usually say, "Oh, 8 to 12 percent." Usually 10 percent. And then I ask them the follow-up question, "Well, how much do you put in reserves?" "Oh, we put significantly more into..." These are the not-for-profits, insurance companies. "We put significantly more into reserves than we need to." You know, now, I, I don't usually get into the, how much money they pay their executives. I leave that alone. But we all know what those costs are. So, the point is, and then I bring this up, and I say, "Well, what is the administrative cost for managing Medicare?", which is like 3 percent in that range. And they say, "Oh, well, that's different because Medicare doesn't take care of any of the, the management of it. We manage those, you know, the other private companies." Which is true. But, you know, that, that begs the, the one question. So, if we take your administrative cost down from 10 percent to 9 percent, you still going to make it? You know what that 1 percent would do in terms of payouts to, to the people? So, that, you know, payouts to premiums, lowering premiums and also improving benefits. So, that is a real issue. You hear constantly about the, the pharmaceutical companies. I mean, this whole idea of allowing the negotiation of prices, that will bring the profit margin down for pharmaceutical companies because we're going to, they're going to have to negotiate because you buy in bulk. So, they are things that we talk about. And when you hear the term bending the cost curve, these are the things we try to do. But, you know, you try to do it in a capitalistic setting. I mean, we're, we're, you know, we are trying to do it in a way that, you know, isn't overburdened some on, on the system. I mean, and some people say we're too much. And I, I talked to somebody not too long ago, and they said, "You know what? You need to leave doctors alone. But what you should do is you should get on these insurance companies and limit their profit margin to X. You should get on the pharmaceutical companies and limit their profit margin to Y. You should get on, and they went into something else and Z. And I said, so you want us to limit everybody's, you want us to come in and, you know, limit what everybody can earn, but, but leave doctors alone? I mean, it's, you know, we're trying to do this in the most capitalistic way that, that we can. So, to answer your question, yes, we do look at it, we do try to do it, and we try to do it in a, in the most reasonable way that we can. At least that's, I shouldn't say we, I, that's what I look at anyway, because I can't speak for my colleagues.
Now, one question in the box there, sir. I want to forget about that area over there. He's first.
Sorry. I'd like to thank you for coming here today. First off, my name is Christopher Perch. I'm a student here at the college, and I have a question for you. More or less goes along the issue of taxation on people who don't choose to go to public auction, option.
Okay.
I would just like to inquire on what exactly is the proposal on tax for people who already, who already have affordable healthcare? Better yet, how does this taxation, taxation work if you don't switch to the public option? And when combined with the individual, individual's current insurance, doesn't it make another financial hardship, even if they couldn't afford it before?
I'm not sure, I, I, there were so many parts to that question, I'm not sure I have it all. Ask me at one part at a time. Ask me the first part of it. Just read that back to me again.
I would just like to inquire on what exactly is the proposal on the tax for people who don't switch to the public option?
Well, if you want to talk about the House of Representatives bill, all right, there is no individual tax on it if you choose the public option. There is a pay for, you have to pay some money for it, but that is a sliding scale based upon what your income is. So you still have to pay for it if you take the public option. It's not a tax-related, it's just a payment, and that's based upon your income. That's the proposal out of the House of Representatives.
Okay. And the second part was, for those who don't switch to the public option, there was a, a fine or something. How does the fine work if you want to keep your, your healthcare currently? And does it, isn't it combined, does the fine go along with what you already have?
Yeah. No, no, there, there's no fine associated with if you have a plan at the present time. I think what you're thinking about, if you don't choose to have healthcare, then there is a fee that, and this again is in the proposal, there's a fee that you have to pay when you, when you, I, I think it's when you, when you do, when you file your income tax return that comes out as a result of not taking it. So, that's, that's where that figure comes in. But if you have another insurance, you do not have to, you're not, you're not even affected by it at all. There's an, also a fee associated with an employer that we talked about a little earlier with, with that gentleman over there. Okay?
Okay, thank you.
All right, and I think, did you have one more part of that?
No.
I shouldn't have even asked that. I know I shouldn't, I should have let it go with that. It's always dangerous.
Gentleman, I'll wait back, would you, you serve me?
Hi, David Milbauer from Rome. I worked for a corporation that just told me that they are gonna cancel the insurance plan that I now have, and they're gonna reinstate another plan that would cost me a lot more in participation of. And I know you've already stated on the taxation, so if they were to cost, if it were to cost me more to have the plan that they're gonna instate, and then that is added to my year-to-date earnings. And I know you have stated how you felt on that already, but I would just like to hear it again, if I could, please.
Well, and, and I feel that if you are part of any group that negotiates your contract, and you have negotiated at the present time for a particular plan, all right, then you should not have a tax on that. Okay, so for instance, I go to work at a place, and they say your salary is gonna be $25,000 a year, and you're going to get, you know, healthcare, we're gonna pay for 50 percent of your healthcare benefits. And I say to them, okay, well, I'll take, I mean, I don't have to say it at all, but I'll, the, the assumption is that, on my part is this, I have taken that pay, $25,000 may be less than I can earn, because they're gonna pay half of my insurance, all right? That shouldn't be factored into the future. Okay? Now, the only thing I'm saying is, you can't do it prospectively. You know, I mean, you can't do it retroactively, if you, if you even talk about it. And I, I don't support it, but if there's any talk of it, it would only have to be prospectively, so it's part of the negotiation. But I don't see that, I mean, I, I don't support it. I don't think that it's a fair way of doing it. So, it's not on the table right now, but that was obviously a plan that was, that, that comes out and comes in and comes out and comes in. It's not on anybody's proposal right now. So, no, it's not part of Baca's bill, it's not part of any of the House bills. Okay?
Uh, sir, I, I was going to have, who is this gentleman? Yes. Very well.
Uh, hi Congressman, Steve Kebelish. Last time I talked to you, we were having lunch at Camp Eggers, Kabul, Afghanistan.
A little different, huh?
Yeah, a little bit different.
A little cooler.
I had, my hair's longer now, too.
Glad you're back.
I have a few concerns, and then a question is, the President has made his two priorities, I think, cutting costs and providing affordable healthcare for everybody. But I don't see how we're gonna ever come to a situation that works if we don't figure out what premise we're operating on. If we try to make, covering everybody the overriding goal, I don't see how we're ever gonna control costs, because any time there's a need for healthcare, we'll assume that those, the, the costs associated with providing a need will be paid for. Well, how do you cut costs if that's the, the premise? If the premise is to cut costs, why aren't we moving more toward a market system, whereas the consumer has incentive to live a better lifestyle? Now, I know you mentioned incentives for living healthier lifestyles, but if everyone's in insurance, already the risks are diminished, and the incentive is kind of diminished as well to lead a healthier lifestyle. And one final concern, then I'll get to my question, is what, what premise does the government have to penalize people for not taking health insurance? I understand the power the government has in regulating insurance through the Commerce Clause, but I don't understand what power the government ever had was given in order to penalize people who are not participating in any kind of monetary, or economic activity. So, I understand the, the, the costs associated with going into emergency rooms without insurance, but I still don't see how you can take it the other way and penalize people. So my question is, what, what measures are you looking for that put people and the doctor face-to-face, and they can negotiate the costs, and, and money and profits can be made by the doctors instead of insurance companies? And so that, there's not a, a given there, that the doctor's gonna get his money no matter what he provides as far as healthcare, and that the, the patient is gonna be paying him out money regardless of whether they receive the benefits that they're looking for? Thanks.
So, it's a lot there. First off, you guys got the short end of the stick. Hudson Valley is getting the President, and you guys get a lowly congressman, so I guess he made plans to go out there and speak on healthcare. But a couple of points, and, and it goes to the point that I made right at the very beginning, and that was that this is about more than just ensuring the people that don't have insurance. It's gotta be about making health insurance more affordable. I mean, it, it has to be about that, that's part of it. And, you know, one of the things, we're, yesterday, AARP representatives came and talked to us, and they said, you know, one of the things that, that you need to understand when you're talking to seniors is that you can't say, you can't talk in this, you know, grandiose way. You can't say, this is gonna reduce the cost of your healthcare, because people realize that it's not gonna reduce it, but it's gonna help to get it under control. I mean, that's what we are, that's what we're trying to do. How do you do that? How, how do you get people to pay, have to pay less, and then ensure the people that don't have it? Well, I mean, there, there clearly is a lot of waste, fraud, and abuse in the system. Is there, to the extent that some people talk about? I don't think so. I mean, I was a DA for a lot of years, and I saw, you know, we did a lot of prosecution of, of white-collar crime. You see some, that's part of it. Part of it, though, is, is in the, the duplication of service that we see a lot of right now. You know, where a person goes to the primary care physician, the primary care physician refers them to another physician, refers them to another physician. That's inefficient. The emergency room system that we seem to be working under is completely inefficient. So let's say, you, you know, you don't have insurance, I'll use you as an example, if you don't mind, and you have a, you know, a really bad sinus infection, you know, one of those really bad, it's a weekend, you go to the, you go to the emergency room, all right? Doctor, they run some tests on you, they take blood, they do all the things, and they give you, you know, an antibiotic, they give you a prescription for an antibiotic. Two days later, doesn't go away, you go back to the emergency room, you visit someone else who does a blood test again, who maybe makes another prescription to you, you know? So, that is the worst kind of duplication of service that you could possibly have. That's the kind of stuff that, that we are trying to prevent. Now, you talked about an interesting constitutional issue early on. How does the government come in and tell someone what to do? And, I mean, we tell people what to do with respect to cars, you know? I mean, if you're gonna drive on the road, you have to have insurance. I mean, that's the example that everyone's been using, and I realize, health insurance is a little different, but when you think about it this way, is, we're gonna end up paying for some of those people who don't get insurance if they go to the emergency room. We're all gonna be paying that bill, in much the same way that, so, so you're gonna get the benefit of living in a society, I don't want to get, you know, too, but you're gonna get the benefit of living in a society where you're gonna get healthcare, in much the same way you live in a society, and you pay taxes for the defense that, that we pay for to protect you. So, I mean, again, I think it, it is a little different, and we're trying to do it in the best way we can. You try to cut the fraud and abuse out, in not just the, the abuse to people that scam the system, but likewise, in the duplication of service, in the inefficient way that we render healthcare. And, and one of the things that I, I have really been focused on is the preventative care aspect, because I think that is absolutely critical. And I'm gonna get beat up by some people on the other side, on the left, who say that you are trying to discriminate against people with diseases, people who are not healthy. And my argument's gonna be, no. I, I, it's not about people who are not healthy, it's about people who lead a healthy lifestyle. So if I have diabetes, I can still be healthier and live a healthier lifestyle by following a certain regimen that my, that my, my doctor gave me, and I can then bring, theoretically bring down the cost of my premium if I follow. That's the kind of thing that we should be doing. I mean, we should incentivize people to quit smoking, you know? We should incentivize people to lose weight if that's what they need to do to bring down. We should, you know, and again, I tell the story all the time, go to my doctor about it, and, and, you know, he wants to put me on a drug, I'm, I'm lipitoric. I want a better diet. Give me, send, you know, give me, give me something so I know, because I'm a terrible eater. I, I don't eat all day, and then I, you know, I have a huge dish of macaroni before I go to bed, you know? It's late. I mean, it's, it's the worst way to eat, and you just gain weight that way all the time. But that's the wrong way to eat. And, you know, so what I'm saying is, we need to focus more on healthier lifestyles. Those are kind of, but that's not easy to do. I mean, this, this is really, this is tough stuff to try to, and that's, to your question, why is the bill so complicated? We're trying to do a whole lot of different things, and no one's exactly sure. And everyone's got these great ideas of what we should do, so you've got 435 members that all have ideas on how we should do this thing, and, you know, we end up putting sometimes an overly cumbersome bill together, so.
Okay. Like in the fourth question.
Hi, I'm from Little Falls, New York, and I would just like to ask you, I heard that illegal immigrants would not be covered with this bill, but yet, we aren't trying to find who is an illegal immigrant. Is that true? That they block that, the Democrats?
No. Well, the, I'm not sure, I don't think that that's the case, but I'm not sure, the, the, page 143, and I could read it to you, specifically says on it that people who are not legally in this country are now entitled to healthcare insurance. Now, the whole Joe Wilson idea, when he called the President a liar, his argument was, the reason that he did that, was that the plan doesn't do anything to, um, protect, to, to find the people and, and to prevent it from happening, which is really wrong on his part, because that's, that's not, it was not lying. The bill clearly does not say it. Now, what, what Joe Wilson wanted is the bill to go further, which I, which I think they're talking about doing, which the President has talked about, as I understand it, which I think they're talking about doing, was taking further steps. But here is the social problem, all right? So, and, and, and forgive me for this, I don't mean this, because I don't, I wouldn't want this job. I would not want to be the job of the person in the hospital who has to tell an illegal person who comes up, you're not getting healthcare. Or we're gonna have ICE officers to come in there and take the people, I mean, realistically. And then, how about if that person dies as a result of not getting healthcare, who's gonna, you know, who's gonna want to have to answer that? I mean, there are some major social problems that are associated with this. I mean, we have taken, frankly, the path of least resistance, where we say, no one who is an illegal can get healthcare, and we will do everything we can to try to stop it, but applying this is gonna be really extremely difficult. I mean, I'm not gonna sit up here and, and lie to you and tell you, we're gonna, you know, no one's gonna get it. I mean, you know what's gonna happen. I mean, we all do. But we're gonna do what we can, certainly, to try to, to try to prevent it.
Well, it's just the fact that, let's face it, the country was bound, you know, built on immigrants. But my mother came from Poland in 1921 she was born, and she's vehemently opposed to funding for illegals, because she came here legally. And they were sponsored, they came, and they had to come and, and they might have been denied, because we have people that need this job or can fulfill that job, and we don't want you. And so they were denied. And so, we're founded on immigrants, but we shouldn't have to pay for somebody that doesn't belong here.
I agree.
And I think that people, it's a really bad time to do the healthcare because of the financial crisis that we are in. And we just feel bamboozled by President Obama because he's trying to do everything so fast.
Well, I, I don't think it's fair to say "we." I mean, that may be your position, but I think not everybody feels that way. I mean, I, I, you know, I hear it from a lot of different, a lot of different places. But go ahead, I didn't mean to interrupt.
We're just, we, and my son is in college in Pennsylvania, and he votes there, and he said, oh, my vote counts, yours doesn't, because you're gonna go Democrat anyways. And I am a Democrat, but I'm going to the other side. I, I'm just, when President Obama said back in October that he wanted to spread the wealth around, and, you know, we're middle-class people, and we work hard, we value an education, and the idea that our doctors are getting paid $19 to see a Medicare patient Medicaid, it's ridiculous.
So, but, but, so to fix that, we have to fix the healthcare system. But that's what you don't want us to do. I mean, it sounds like you don't want to, to do anything that requires that to happen. So, how do we fix that compensation rate to doctors?
But do you think it's just a little, I think conservatives are just scared that things are happening too fast, because it's the year that it's happening. Everything, people are thinking the glass is half-empty because of the financial, you know, the stock market.
I, I, I agree with you. I mean, I go back and forth with that, and I, and I wish, I mean, I'm, I'm a student of history, I was, and, and I wish I could have seen what the debate was in '35 and '36 during the Depression, when I, I have no doubt they were saying the same thing. And in fact, I've, what, what I asked my staff to do is pull some of the old articles from the, the newspaper, from the debate, not only in '65 when we passed Medicare, but in '35 when we passed Social Security. And the debate was much the same. Why are we going so fast? Why are we doing all of these things? You know, the system will rectify itself. But, and, and you know, and I agree with you. I mean, I voted no on the cap and trade bill, because although I like the idea of what the cap and trade bill was gonna do, I don't think the economy was in the right place to do that. But I go back and forth on, is there ever a wrong time to do healthcare? And when you think about it this way, we spend 17 percent, 17 percent of our GDP on healthcare. We cannot sustain that continuing. I mean, believe me, the easiest thing in the world will be for me to vote no on this thing. That will be so easy for me to do, but I'm not sure, you know, I mean, I, I have to really take a look, because, because that's not gonna fix it. No is not necessarily a good answer. I mean, believe me, if it's not a good bill, and I don't understand it well enough, and I don't know what the ramifications are, I'll vote no. But we have to do something. I mean, we, you know, inaction is not, you know, is not an option, in the same way that, you know, I mean, we did some things with the economy. I mean, whenever a, a government takes steps to, to, to rectify an economy, they get criticized. I mean, it's not just an American thing, it's all over the world. So, I mean, steps had to be taken to stabilize the banking industry, whether we like it or not. It had to be done, so, you know, I, I, I agree with a lot of what you say, although I'm not switching to the other side, I'm gonna stay a Democrat, but other than that, I, but anyway, your, your points are very well taken. And I think there is, there's a fear and an apprehension that we are doing so many things so quickly, and, you know, a lot of us are trying to slow things down, and again, but there is a certain expediency to, to having to act on, on certain things. So, thank you, your comments were very good.
Congressman, we have time for one more question, unless you feel differently.
Well, you guys have been great. How about if we do a couple more? We'll do, how about if we do three more, okay?
How about a farmer?
Oh, absolutely, all right. Gotta have a farmer, we haven't had a farmer yet, okay. That's what he said.
How about the farmer next? I already pointed to having a farmer.
Okay, very good, all right. Sorry, I don't want to get involved, all right? You're, all right, I did. Okay.
Yes, thank you. Frank Green, I'm owner of a business here in Herkimer, live in Frankfurt. Get back to one quick point about the advertising and the regulation of legal recreational pharmaceuticals. We already do that, it's called alcohol and tobacco. I, for one, have heard enough ED ads during my dinner hour. Put them after midnight where they belong, please, okay? We can control that, I've had enough. But to get back to my, my point, my comment, my question, is tort reform. I wanna go back to that from before. To me, that's the center point, focus of what anything, if anything, is done, not just medical, but product in all legal action. Our, our legal system is broke, okay? You have judges legislating from the bench, you have juries out of control. I don't trust the jury of my peers. My brother, who is an attorney, explained to me very clearly, our legal system is based on 12 people not smart enough to get out of jury duty. Okay? I have never been called. No trial attorney would ever put me on a jury. I would fill our jail, if we could ever build one, with every jaywalker, okay? every jaywalker, okay? That's just me. So, you know, what I want to know, is, this is the question, is what part of this medical bill is tort reform? Is it a back piece, back page to appease, as you call the other side of the aisle? Or is it a focus, center, point of the bill, whatever bill comes out? Your opinion?
Well, first off, I am glad about one thing that you say, that I have no say whatsoever in your jail debate, I am really happy about that, because there's a, I couldn't come out on top of that one in any way, shape, fashion, or form. I know that's a tough issue for you guys. But, but to your point, it is not a focal point, and in fact, it, the President talked about it and said he would like to put it, it is not contained in any part of the House bill, it's not contained in the Senate bill, I got a feeling that we will have it as a part of a, you know, a bill that ultimately comes out of committee. It's just, that's the sense that I get, but it is not a part of any of the bills, it is not a focus, or even a, even a footnote in any of the bills, but I think that there may be a piece in it, I'm getting a sense that there may be something in it. And, and probably, I would guess, based along what I described earlier, in terms of the, the healthcare physicians setting up sort of parameters, and then judges having to, to look at that and make a decision whether or not to dismiss on what's called a declaratory judgment before.
As promised by the Congressmen, this gentleman, I'm...
Yes, sir.
Welcome, Congressman.
Thank you for being here.
I'm George Demery. I'm George Demery, a dairy farmer at Little Falls. Bought my farm when the thruway went through, that's a farm right on the thruway, because it took 50 acres right out of the middle of it. And, farmers are in the worst shape they've ever been in, as far as I can see, and I've been at it 52 years. But, I don't want to talk about that now, I want to talk about your health situation. What about the dairy farmers? And, as I understand it, most dairy farmers have their wives out working where they have insurance, that's how they do have their insurance, because their wives are working at a place where they do get their insurance. Now, you're going to have this bill, and any of our hired help, we're going to be penalized, we're going to have to pay an extra if we don't have health insurance for them. When, how are we going to do that when we don't even have health insurance for ourselves? And, you know what the situation is on the milk right now?
It's a 12...
1970 prices, and we're paying bills in 2009, and some flues of them are going broke. But, let's talk about that later.
No, well, I mean, let's talk about it now, because I think it's, it's sort of interwoven together. You know, I had a really good, it wasn't a good one, but it was, it was, it was helpful, a town hall meeting in Waterville, and it was primarily just dairy farmers, you know? And, and it's interesting, because, I want to talk about this, we had a meeting with Colin Peterson, who is the Chairman of the Agricultural Committee, we want to reopen the farm bill just for the provision for temporary help for dairy farmers. Now, we think we're going to be able to do it. The money's in the Senate bill, it's not, and we talked about a lot of different ways of doing it, but we think the best way to do it, to get help immediately to the dairy farmers, if we can pull it off, and we got a pretty good coalition together.
I have a plan for that.
Well, but, but...
I was supposed to be writing that for Chuck Schumer today, but I have more important for me to come here to talk to you.
Alright, well, make sure you send me a copy of it, and I mean that, because we have a great working group of, of areas, and I'll tell you about that, but, so, so point of it is this, we think the, and, and we had some great, everybody had great ideas of how to get the money to farmers, but all of them took too long, so we think the quickest way to get money, I mean, look, this is a crisis, this isn't an emergency, this is a crisis, is pay it through the Milc program, and, and pay a significant, well, a pretty good, I think a pretty good chunk of money, if we can do this the way we think we're going to do it, at least, it's not going to make you rich, it's not going to break you even, but it's going to help out an awful lot for most of the dairy farmers. So, we're working on it, I can't give you the details of it, but in fact, I spoke to Rosa DeLore yesterday, who is the person who's in charge of the appropriations for dairy, and she said, Mike, there's a very, very good chance we can do this. So, we think, you know, again, it's not going to happen tomorrow, but we're, we're pushing real hard to make this happen.
Okay, if I say a little bit?
Sure, absolutely.
What I have in mind is a stimulus program for the dairy farmers. We haven't heard that before, but I don't want the money going to dairy farms. I want to, this money you're talking about, that's in the Senate, I want to see that buying a million cows off the dairy farm. There's 6% too much milk out.
Right, we talked about that.
The only way we're going to get the price of milk out is get the supply down to, so that it's even with what's in assumption is.
Well, we talked about buying cows, we talked about buying cheese, government buying cheese to, neither of which, I can tell you, we think will have the kind of direct effect that a direct payment will have. I mean, it's, it's still a slow trickle down if you start buying cows, it's still going to take a while for that to kick in. It may have a better long-term, but we're, we're looking for a short-term benefit. And, and we, we got to be careful, because we don't want to open up the, the ag bill, I mean, that creates major problems.
If this word gets out, that we want to take a million cows off the market that are milking, milking every day, that that price is automatically going to start coming.
Well, we also have another problem, and that is that farms are very different. And our group is strongly weighted in the Northeast, you know, because we represent areas like this that have a lot of small dairy farms. But don't forget, we compete with the California people that have a lot of large farms with 5,000 head, you know, and, so we got to keep the California people happy as well, because they have a strong dairy, they make 18 to 20% of the milk they produce. So, we have to get them on board with anything that we do.
We have to land for that.
Well, it's okay, alright, I would, I would very much like to see it, but, point, and just to get to your point, to bring it back to healthcare, that was, I was on Capitol tonight about a month ago, and, and it was the night that I had that town hall meeting, and I said specifically, and I brought that up, I said, you know, farmers, our dairy farmers, are small business people, so when we do this plan, we better be careful how we do it, because, and I brought that up specifically, they can't, a lot of these people can't afford healthcare for their own, and, and I'm, I'm hearing people tell me, we want government out of, you know, we want government to set a better price, support the, you know, the Casey bill, the Casey Specter bill, which I don't know is the best idea, but stay out of our healthcare insurance, you know? And, it, it's difficult.
This is long-term, you get that. I'm talking about something immediately, because I'm talking about...
For milk or for healthcare? For, for milk, I understand. We're just, I, I want to make sure that you as a farmer, don't get doubly hit if you have to pay, you know, for your employees, healthcare insurance that you're not providing for families. So, that is, I can tell you, a very important issue, and, and please, I would love to see your plan, I can tell you, it's, it, we'll take, we'll take suggestions on almost anything, so I would very much like to hear it, so thank you.
As stated before, Congressman, we'll take one more question.
One more?
If your question doesn't get answered, serious assistance?
Yes, well, I'm not, I'll be here for a couple minutes, so I'll try to get everybody, I don't want to leave anybody out.
And I'm a chicken, so I'll at least pick the last one.
Hi Congressman, I'm Katie Nichols, I'm a trustee in the Village of Herkimer. And I hear people talking about why rush it. The Village of Herkimer this year is paying $18,574 for a family plan. In five years, that will be $30,000 for one employee's family plan. The Village of Herkimer is over 50% tax-exempt property, we have a declining tax base, we've got declining sales tax revenue, and our people are being taxed, property taxes are escalating all across the board. We can't wait. The, the local governments are paying a heavy price, and that, and I should say, the taxpayers, it's a burden that they cannot sustain. I, I feel that we need to get this bill passed soon. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, as I said, I'll stay around, I have, I have something else at, at 2, but I can stay, right, is it 2, Sam? Alright, so I can, I can stay till 2 to try to answer your questions, and if I don't get to it, I have to leave at 2 though, but if I don't get to it, please, you know, see one, we'll get, we'll get your name, and ma'am, I know you want to ask questions, so why don't you come up and we'll, we'll chat afterward, okay? Folks, I want to say thank you, I mean, really, in, in America, there is no better way to express your, your views and your opinions, there's no better way as a representative. I am very, very proud of our district, because my town hall meetings have been fabulous. So, thank you very much for the civility of Joan, and for being here.